Request for public property to special permit SS County Green Belt Bike Ride Tour, Saturday, September 17th, 2016, from 1:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And a water stop at the Lower Green from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Motion. Second?
Discussion on lines. Make sure it's not marked. Go ahead.
You can carry that discussion.
We've had a lot of problems with the bike rides coming to town. We have quite a few of them. They've been marking with some indelible paint at different times on our roads and directions for people to turn left or right. Some people use the chalk that easily disappears within, but that stays a long time, too. So, do we want to ask, in the form of discussion, I guess, for people to use signs and no marking?
Who is going to do research on?
Alicia.
Alicia.
Alicia, who is not here.
And we got into the thing about signage is off to the side and lines are right where your viewpoint is when you're turning.
Well, I think I'd be happy to include a motion saying that it must be a chalk spray paint that lasts no more than 30 days, because I feel that it's safer for the riders. I don't want to limit the bike ride, but I don't want it marking up the roads for long, either.
Before we make that motion, why don't we condition it with where necessary and also use signage?
All right. So, I move that we grant the application with the condition that they use a spray chalk or other removable paint where necessary, in addition with lawn signs, and that the markings on the road last no longer than 30 days.
Second motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We also have, we have to make a motion to approve the date of October 18th, 2016, for our special town meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have been talking with Erica Jacobson about ways to make it so younger couples can attend the meeting in full, including trying to get some of the seniors from the high school to volunteer to babysit. And the school has talked about having a no homework during that day, so it's easier for parents to attend the meeting. So, we're looking at various ways to make it more possible for younger couples to be in attendance, including trying to get the sports teams to make sure they don't schedule anything on those days. So, we're working on making it more inclusive meeting.
Great.
Very good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, I guess the big presentation tonight for which everyone is here, Martha, who is our town planner, would you like to head it off and explain a little bit of the process, or should we let the folks go right into the presentation?
Or Paul.
Or Paul would be great. That's right. I saw you out of the corner of my eye. Paul, present who you are and what you're doing for us and the process that we're entering into.
So, my name is Paul Haverdy. I'm town council with Blatman, Bobrowski, Mead, and Tallaman. I have over a decade worth of experience on Chapter 40B projects. So, the application that's currently in front of the board is not for any sort of approval tonight. It is simply an informational meeting so that the applicant can present its proposal. It's something that they're required to do before they're allowed to apply for an application to the subsidizing agency, which in this case is Mass Housing. So, once the applicant has applied to Mass Housing, the town has 30 days, and we've actually negotiated a little bit longer than that, because the application was already submitted. But generally, the town would have 30 days to file comments with the subsidizing agency, expressing whatever concerns they may have with the application, which is something that the board really can't do, or the town can't do with any sort of coherence unless they've received this presentation from the applicant, you know, explaining exactly what the project is. Looking at the plans, you know, you can base some questions from that, but having the back and forth with a presentation from the applicant saying exactly what they're planning to do allows the board in the town to focus their concerns and better address them towards the subsidizing agency.
Paul, just so, because I think people are concerned, and from my time on the planning board, I can imagine what you're thinking, but really, 40B enabling allows, and I want you to flesh this out for me, but allows people to kind of lay some of our bylaws on the wayside, but they have to adhere to all state wetland regulations and other things?
Correct. So, under Chapter 40B, an applicant is authorized to request waivers of local permitting requirements, such as zoning bylaws, local Board of Health rules, local wetlands bylaws, things along those nature, subdivision rules and regulations, and anything that is a local bylaw, something locally adopted, the applicant has the right to request waivers in order to allow them to construct the project as proposed. That is something that will be part of a process in front of the zoning Board of Appeals after the applicant has received an eligibility letter from the subsidizing agency. The applicant doesn't have the authority to file their application with the Board of Appeals until they've received their eligibility letter. So, we're really at the very, very beginning stage of the process. There's not, nobody's asking for anything, for any board to do anything tonight. It's simply an informational meeting.
Now, we should ask for the presentation. Is it by Jeffrey Angler? Is he here? This is you?
Hello? Is this on?
Just for TV, it's not.
Okay. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Angler from the firm of SEBLLC. I wouldn't, I appreciate Mr. Chairman and the board hearing us tonight. I wouldn't characterize, really, this is my presentation. I'm from the firm of SEBLLC. We're 40B consultants and developers. We specialize in mixed-income, multifamily residential housing. My firm has been involved in the permitting of 15,000 units of housing in 150 towns in Massachusetts.
Can you put the microphone on? We can hear you.
You know what? The microphone is actually just for the television, so we're going to ask.
I'll speak up.
So.
I will speak.
And there is a couple of chairs right here for folks that have trouble standing. Mike, is there any chairs we can bring out from the office there? Come on in if you can, and this, Mike's bringing some chairs out, folks.
So, I'll speak up. I apologize. Usually, my voice carries okay. Just to repeat, for those that didn't hear, I represent the applicant in this case, the applicant of the development that's before the town and before Mass Housing as a subsidizing agency. I'm here tonight, really, to talk a little bit mostly about process, which I think is important for everybody here tonight. We were a little surprised, I mean, I've been involved in a lot of towns, Newberry not being one of them, and I didn't realize until we met with the town, I'd say, I don't know, two months ago, give or take, that this is the first ever 40B in the town of Newberry, which is pretty unique and unusual. So, we look forward to introducing the program, if you will, to the town, and most importantly, working collaboratively as the process goes forward. As Mr. Haverdy said, it's important to recognize tonight is really an initial step in a very long process. We've just filed recently with Mass Housing, and as part of that, they then reach out to the municipality and say, hey, town, we've just got this application. Would you please circulate it and provide comments to us as we analyze the application based on our own criteria? So, that is really the process that's going on now and where we are, in that the town will be gathering and coordinating comments, which will be formally submitted to Mass Housing, and those comments can be anything and everything related to the application. Some may be general, some may be technical. It's also important to note, relative to 40B, and there's characterizations and whatnot, it's not just the developer run roughshod over the municipality. Yes, you can ask for waivers from local zoning bylaws, Board of Health bylaws, conservation bylaws, but you have to demonstrate that the project works, and you have to demonstrate that you meet state regulations. And we will be subjected to a very extensive review through the zoning board process, where the town will have the opportunity to hire what's called peer review consultants to basically critique the plans that we've provided on a very technical basis. So, we don't give the town a plan and say, take our word for it, you know, it's going to work. The town will hire a civil engineer to look at stormwater management, to look at the septic system. They will hire a traffic engineer to look at the information that we've submitted. And that's all part of the process to ultimately and eventually arriving at a plan that hopefully both parties think is palatable and works. So, and that process occurs over 180 days from the time we file to when the public hearing is closed, and it's up to the zoning Board of Appeals to determine how many meetings they want to have during that time. But it is a rigorous public exchange of information, all above board, all very transparent, relative to comments that the neighbors will submit, that town officials, town departments. It all gets kind of incorporated and synthesized in the whole part of the process. So, just to recap, this is really the beginning of a long process. We look forward to the comments that we receive from the town. We would recommend that the people, if they have written comments or otherwise, whether it be technical, whether it be things that you've observed from being in the neighborhood, whether it's things that you know from being in the town, whatever it might be, submit it to the town so they can submit it on, hopefully, in a cohesive manner, and Mass Housing will look at all those comments. It's also important to recognize, as part of the site approval application process, the state is really looking at the application at a more, what I would call, generalized overview. So, they're not necessarily looking at infiltration rates and the size of detention chambers and things like that. That's left to the zoning Board of Appeals and their team and their peer review consultants. Mass Housing is looking at the project basically on an established set of criteria. Is it contextual? Are we doing an eight-story building, you know, in the middle of a residential subdivision? Is it generally appropriate? Does it seem like, is it, the traffic seems generally appropriate for the area? So, they look at it at a very high level. Is the town under 10% of their total housing stock, which obviously Newberry is in this case? So, they look at a whole established set of criteria and eventually make a determination on whether or not the application is worthy of getting a site approval letter. If for some reason we don't get a site approval letter from Mass Housing, the application goes nowhere. We don't, that's the ticket to be able to file with the zoning Board of Appeals. I can tell you, I would imagine, I don't want to speak for a town council, but in all my experience, I would be very surprised if we did not get a site approval letter from Mass Housing based on the parameters of the proposed program. I know to many members of the audience that this seems like an extremely dense project, and I certainly respect and understand that in terms of the context. I can tell you, in terms of eastern Massachusetts, what Mass Housing sees, 40B projects in general, this is, for lack of a better adjective, pretty tame. It's a very low density. It's, it looks and feels like, in many respects, to a typical subdivision, but obviously it is a 40B, and there's additional considerations. And obviously, most importantly, 25% of the total units of the 24 units will be deed restricted and available through a lottery process to households that are eligible. It's also, and I know I'm, I apologize, a little long-winded. Hopefully, the board is getting some value out of that, and then I'll turn it over to our engineers to talk more specifically about the program. There's some misinformation or characterizations relative to the affordable units. This is not public housing. This is not destitute people. These are gainfully employed, really the workforce, but it's a deed-restricted house that, in this instance, will be sold for approximately half the market value of the market units, and it'll be permanently deed-restricted. So, an affordable household that goes through the lottery process and is found to be eligible through the certification process cannot buy in, and then next year say, okay, now I'm going to sell it on the open market and make all this money. It's deed-restricted, so it'll stay affordable in perpetuity. It'll always be available for an affordable household. Typically, the people that buy into these houses remain for a long time, they're part of the community. Many of them will probably live in Newberry right now, which is typically what we see. As part of our business, in addition to the permitting process, we administer more affordable lotteries than any other entity in the state. So, we're involved with the certification and the eligibility review of all those households, whether it be a homeownership application like this, or a big rental project, or everything in between. So, we confirm, and there's monitoring and whatnot, but that the people that are given the opportunity to purchase an affordable unit do in fact comply with the regulations. So, at the end, after our presentation, I'd be happy to answer any procedural or process or 40B-related questions. I did not anticipate such a robust turnout. We do have handouts tonight that just kind of have some site plans, some unit plans and whatnot. I'll distribute those. If you're here with somebody, I would ask that you just take one and look on with your neighbors, so to speak, and I brought some for the board as well. So, with that said, I'll turn it over to TTI.
Before you sit down, you mentioned that affordable housing in this area was half the market value of what you're going to be asking for the homes. Can you clarify that number so that people understand?
Sure.
That we're in a little different area here, and I'm not advocating for 40B housing, but these units won't be going for 40 grand. What's the current rate now for our area?
Well, it's a good question. The sale price of the affordable units is pretty much exclusively formulaic. The only part of the formula that the developer has any influence on is the association fees, whether it be a condo or a homeowners' association. Everything else is driven by, what is the area median income of this metropolitan statistical area? That's one input. What is the residential tax rate in Newberry? That's the second input. What is the current mortgage rate on a 30-year fixed mortgage? That's the third input, and I believe the fourth is the association fee. So, basically, oh, and the number of bedrooms, excuse me. That's basically what gets put into the formula, and that spits out what the affordable sale price is. It's not determined by the size of the house, or the level of finish, or where it is in town, or, so, units, any three-bedroom unit in Newberry, an affordable unit, would be treated the same as a three-bedroom unit, and a different part of town would be treated as the same as a three-bedroom unit, and a different 40B project in a, within the same metropolitan statistical area, the only difference being that association fee. And the association fee varies project to project, and I don't mean to overly simplify, but the association fee basically covers anything that's going to be a common area expense. So, that would be, in this case, probably maintenance of stormwater management infrastructure, septic infrastructure, things of that nature. So, that's really the only part of the formula the developer controls. To answer, and that's a long-winded way to get back to your original question. Based on the original calculations that we did, and the prices are not set until the units are ready to go to market, which is when they're about six months away from getting their certificate of occupancy, roughly $220,000, give or take, for the affordable units. So, no, I'm very long-winded tonight, but did that answer your question?
It's 180 to 200 to 220, or somewhere in that range.
Right, but it's not, it has no relationship to the market units. We're doing a project in Weston right now, where the affordable units are 170,000, and the market units are 1.5 million. We're also doing projects in other towns where the delta between the affordable units and the market units is quite small, so there's not quite the value proposition in some more rural towns, where an affordable unit might be 200,000, and the market unit is 250, or 240, or 220. I mean, the market units are obviously what the market will bear. How big's the house? How nice is it? Where is it in town? The same criteria that any of you purchasing a market for sale on the open market would use to establish a unit, is the same criteria a buyer will use in any 40B project. What am I getting for my money? And that's no different. There's no limitation relative to a market unit, what it can sell for, or a threshold, or a minimum. So, so with that said, as I said at the end, I'm happy to answer any questions. We look forward to a collaborative process throughout. We know there's a lot of questions going forward. There'll be plenty of opportunity throughout the process to submit written comments, ask questions, voice concerns. So, I'll turn it over to the hands and gentleman to my left, and we'll talk a little bit more about the technical elements. I will hand some things out.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just address that last question?
Go ahead.
So, the site approval application has financial information in it, and it lists the total sales price for the affordable units at 1.344 million, which comes out to approximately 224,000 per unit. So, that's the current projection.
Do me a favor, turn that a little more so we'll kind of train our heads. Chuck might have to go over there. You don't really need that out, because once again, that's for TV.
All right. So, my name is Ben Osgood Jr. I'm from TTI Environmental. I'm a civil engineer. We're working with the applicant to develop the plans here, and we have a very, it's a preliminary plan. We've done quite a bit of field work to determine what's out there. So, I think, as you all know, this is about a 15 and a half acre site. Pearson Road, right here, number?
Pearson Drive.
Pearson Drive, sorry. Folks, Pearson Drive 55, Pearson Drive, right here. Proposing an easement over number 55 with a approximately 850-foot-long cul-de-sac roadway. It's 24 feet wide, has sidewalks on one side, and it services 24 dwellings. The dwellings would be three- and four-bedroom dwellings. The, as you can see here in the blue, there are wetlands, shown to exaggerate where they are. We have a little area of wetland crossing here. It would be considered a limited project under the wetlands protection by law, about 1,500 square feet or so, approximately. In order to access the site, the site, it's a hilly terrain out here. It is very rocky, but basically, there's a hill here, and a hill here. The roadway will start here at Pearson Drive. It pitches down a little bit, and then it pitches up in a nice gentle grade, about 2% slope to a cul-de-sac. The roadway dimensions and layout all complies with the dimensional regulations of the subdivision control law, with the exception of the length of roadway. I think the subdivision control law limits it to 500 feet, so this is 850 feet, 24 feet wide, sidewalks on one side. I think the subdivision control law requires two sides. We're proposing one side. The homes located along the roadway, they're single-family homes, as I said, three and four bedrooms. There's no, there are no attached units. They're all detached units. They'd be serviced by the municipal water system, which will be extended onto the cul-de-sac. The septic systems would be located down here, which is on the northwest corner of the site. We've been out last fall, and we did soil testing extensively through the site, so we know we have enough capacity to service the units that are here. The stormwater management areas, and these, again, are preliminary. We actually would use some of the cul-de-sac to store stormwater. We have an area here adjacent to this wetlands, and then an area here at the low point in the road, which would drain into this wetlands here. We've gone through the preliminary calculations. Obviously, we have a long ways to go. We haven't done final calculations, but we developed a system that will control the stormwater. It actually fits very well into the landscape, and I do have another drawing with grading, but I don't think anybody would see it from the back of the room, so I'm just going to keep this here. The, I think about 50% of the parcel would be untouched, meaning, this is the tree line here, between the kind of bright green and the more olive green, so that's the limit of cutting approximately, so quite a large portion of the site would remain untouched. The site does extend here off of the map, and heads in an easterly direction, but there's some wetlands and some uplands on the other side of that wetlands that would be preserved. And I guess it's, is very simply, that's about, that's the project. I mean, it's very, it's a 24 units on 15 acres, municipal water, and the private source system is very, a pretty simple project.
Do I have a quick question?
Hold up. Ben, thank you. We will entertain, are you totally done?
Like, I could just put up the architectural rendering.
All right, let him do that, and then we'll get everyone's questions tonight, but we'll get them in a very orderly fashion, and we'll try to make sure they're almost by category so we don't get the same question asked over and over. Now, do you have a question that is absolutely relevant to what he just said?
Yeah, boy, he just pointed.
What?
Boy, he just pointed about the municipal water. He doesn't have the municipal water.
All right. Hold on for a second. Hold that question. Write it down, because you're going to have to come up to the microphone, you're going to have to say your name, and we're going to have to make sure the gent can get all these questions, and we can get these questions. So, finish what you're doing, and then we'll start into the process.
These are just a couple of the typical unit configurations here, architectural plans. They're preliminary. So, essentially, it's a garage faces the front with an entryway. They're two-story units. There's some three-bedrooms and some four. I think there's eight four-bedroom units, and the balance are three-bedroom units. To be spread about the project, we don't know exactly where they would go yet. So, as you can see, it's front-entry garage. Each has their own driveway with two parking spaces. They have a two-car, two-stall garage. I believe they're anywhere from 2,000 to 2,400 square feet. You know, pretty basic colonial-type architecture. And again, these are very preliminary, and may be refined during the process, so.
Now, Jeff and Ben are going to be located there. If there's a lot of people that want to come up, maybe start to form a line, you are going to have to come up to the microphone and speak your name. And then, what you have for questions? Try to make your questions be logical, you know, safe on cul-de-sac, traffic, all the questions that you really want answered. The emotion of the thing we're going to have to deal with as we head into it later, you want to try, well, these guys are here tonight, because otherwise, you're going to be walking through some of our boards and coming to planning board meetings and zoning board meetings. So, tonight, you want to get those logistical questions answered as best you can. You know, those things that you think are going to impact you folks, maybe where you live, if they have impacts, but kind of make those impacts not be, well, it's going to be noisy. Well, that would be maybe one, so shielding would might be, all right. So, we'll start. Who's the first that would like to come up to the microphone?
Name please.
Mine's Nick Cox from Five Pearson Drive. One of the things he mentioned about was the.
Nick, hold on, you can't understand.
It's Nick Cox.
What's your full name, Nick?
All right, so, Nick Cox, Five Pearson Drive.
Okay.
Speak slow.
So, the municipal, you're saying there's municipal water. There's not municipal water. It's the Bifur Water District. I don't know how.
Name please.
Mine's Nick Cox from Five Pearson Drive. One of the things he mentioned about was the...
Nick, call him, you can understand him.
It's Nick Cox.
What's your full name, Nick?
Alright, so Nick Cox, Five Pearson Drive.
Okay.
Speak slow.
So the municipal, you're saying there's municipal water. There's not municipal water. It's the bio-water district. I don't know how, what kind of strain that was one of my first concerns when I saw this. There's what kind of strain that would fall on there? And is a bio-water district prepared, or are they required to open up that system to that? Because it's not municipal, nothing to do with the town of Newbury at all.
I think, I think...
I don't know how you want to... You've said that you were doing this, so...
Do you want us to try to answer it in time or until the end?
You know what? Why don't you, why don't you sit down? Why don't you answer it as we go?
That's the only question, but one of my questions, but I've got a call.
Why don't you stay standing then, Nick?
Jeff, why don't you just say what you've done for a preliminary fashion, maybe with bio-water? I'm sure you've looked into the fact of could they handle the distribution problem?
I believe the developer has talked to the fire department and the water district, and the water pressure and capacity is sufficient here. 24 homes is not a huge water demand on a gallonage basis for domestic water use. What is the more concerning, and will be addressed in more detail as we go through the process, is the fire flow. And that's what, that's what we've concentrated on, our understanding it is sufficient, and we will further investigate that and provide that information through the process.
I mean, Paul's going to say something now. Are they going to ask you for hydrants? Are they going to ask you to sprinkle? Are they going to ask you to put a pond in? What are they going to do?
We have hydrants proposed. There'd be two hydrants proposed, 500 feet apart. So I believe there's one right at our entrance, and we'd have two in the subdivision. And it's all been kind of on a preliminary basis discussed with the fire department. And, you know, again, as we go through the details of exactly where everything goes will be determined.
I would agree. Relative to the overarching question, under 40B, a private water supplier is basically treated as a municipal water supplier. We see that in several other towns where it's not technically Newbury's municipal system. It's, and sometimes that provider covers a single municipality. Sometimes it's a region, but relative to water being, water being provided, it's treated the same. Hydrant locations and things like that, those really aren't negotiable. I mean, the fire chief will look at the plan and say, "I want them here, he or she, here, here, here," and we put them there, there, and there. Fire safety under 40B is probably the most important consideration relative to any program. So we have to, fire code compliance is not something that's waived under 40B, so pretty much what the fire chief says is what he or she gets.
Paul, did you have something?
No, I was actually going to make one of the same points that Jeff made. I'm not sure I would say that any private, an actual private water department would be subject to Chapter 40B, but a municipal water department, even if it's independent of the municipality itself, is considered a local board under Chapter 40B. But the bigger point to make in what any of these additional questions to come is that the real details of this are going to be flushed out in front of the zoning board of appeals. So at this stage, we're really getting a very bare bones threshold look at what's going on.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak?
Bring it down. Hi, yeah, my name is Paul Rowe. I live at Three Pearson Drive, and I'm totally opposed to this project completely. And the reason why, and the reason why is because Pearson Drive, in 1983 when it was built, was supposed to be a nice little cul-de-sac of medium-income homes. I moved up here with my son. I have a handicapped son that we walk down Pearson Drive with, with his special walker. And he has a special little bicycle that we take him all around Pearson Drive. It's a wonderful area. We have bicyclists that come down there. They're saying that the road is 50 feet wide. It's not 50 feet wide on Pearson Drive, absolutely not. And there's an island out there that is about, oh, makes it about 15 to 20 feet wide on each side. It's not 50 feet wide. They're going to have 24 units going in there. They're going to have two-car garages in there, plus they're going to have parking in their driveways, which I see are very, very wide driveways. Those driveways are going to accommodate people that are going to be visiting, or maybe their teenagers' sons and daughters that have cars. It's going to create at least about 50 cars or 60 cars that are going to be coming up and down Pearson Drive every single morning, every single evening, and during the day. How's my son going to walk down Pearson Drive anymore?
We have no sidewalks.
We haven't got any sidewalks down Pearson Drive. You want to take away the homeowner's land to make sidewalks down there? That's what you're going to have to do, take 10 feet from every side of the, every side of the road to put those sidewalks in. You're building a cul-de-sac off a cul-de-sac. It's ridiculous. You know, you've got a shared septic system that's so close to the wetlands, it's ridiculous. You know, when they built these houses in 1983 on Pearson Drive, they put, they perked the land. They put the septic systems in, and almost half of them, or 75% of them have all failed. Everybody's had to get raised septic systems on Pearson Drive. You're telling me now they're going to put shared septic systems up there on that hill? You got, everything's all sick with the drainage. We're okay with the water problems and all that stuff? I doubt it, because Pearson Driving, we all had shoved $25,000 to $30,000 out of our pockets to put our septic systems in. If you guys want to do anything with the town, put Town Sewage in for us. I'll pay taxes for that.
Before, before I take the next question, can I make this clear to you? And Paul, you might need to clarify if I'm not as clear as I'd like to be. I saw the eyes looking at us. If I understand this, this is going to go to the boards to basically be able to do the best job they can. Correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking at the selectmen. I believe we have about this much clout with this.
Great, so, so...
Because it's the process.
To clarify, and I tried to make this point at the beginning, this board has absolutely no permitting authority based upon this meeting tonight. This is simply an introductory meeting by the applicant that they're required to do before they can file their project eligibility application. Once they get a project eligibility letter from the subsidizing agency, which in this instance is Mass Housing, then they file a comprehensive permit application with the Board of Appeals. That is the board that has the permitting authority over this project. And then if there are other state approvals that are administered by a local body, such as the Conservation Commission under the Wetlands Protection Act, or the Board of Health for the Title V system, they retain their authority under the state procedures, and they will hold their hearings and make their decisions accordingly.
I know a lot of these questions are premature, but will you guys, as a role, help us to organize what our comments and our intentions, our concerns and everything during the process?
You know what? Do me a favor. That is a question that is a very good question. This, this young lady has come all the way up. I want that question set, so you come up after me.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, I'm at 22 Pearson Drive. I moved from Sawgus.
What's your name, please?
Heidi D'Onelli.
Thank you.
And I'm very upset about this whole thing. I moved up here to enjoy where I live and the wetlands. I have really bad water pressure where I am currently, and I just don't feel that this, that this came to this level this quick blows my mind. So I think you're going to have a lot more people involved, and I just don't feel like we can accommodate this in our subdivision. Look somewhere else in town if this needs to be. There's other places. Thank you.
Now, remember, as we take these questions, and any of my board, I know you guys all have questions too, but, you know, state government, let's say Boston looks at Newbury like we're not living up to our responsibility, and it's, that's why Jeff could say he has a pretty good feeling in his heart that this will go through. So the questions that you'll get answered tonight to the best of our ability is our town plan on the planning board and the zoning board, what other Conservation Commission...
Board of Health.
And the Board of Health, because not that the houses are, you know, low-low, it is going to increase your density. One of the things with 40Bs is they come to areas many times, and they use land in a high-density way that was pretty marginal anyway. And a lot of times, they're not doing house-by-house infiltration of the water, so not only are people sometimes impacting immensely, but so are wetlands, because Newbury doesn't have all kinds of, you know, land left that's really perfect for building. So they're going after some of the land that probably in most cases, we'd have more control over that density, because there has already been a subdivision at one time proposed there. So...
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just speak to the process before the ZBA? I think that might help.
Yep.
A little bit. So when the comprehensive permit application is actually filed with the zoning board of appeals, that's when these questions are really going to be fleshed out much better. There was a question with regard to the water pressure. The Board of Appeals can require the applicant to pay for a peer review study to ensure that there is sufficient water capacity, water pressure, things along those lines. Traffic, they can require a peer review of a traffic plan so that they can get a better understanding of what the traffic impacts will be. So this process is really for you to provide to the board, you know, sort of a beginning as to what your specific concerns are. They're not necessarily going to be addressed tonight. They certainly won't be fully addressed tonight, but they will allow the board in the town to put those into its letter to the subsidizing agency, explaining what those concerns are. And presuming the subsidizing agency grants an eligibility letter, in that letter, they will specifically state, "These are issues that were raised that the Board of Appeals should look at once a comprehensive permit application is filed."
And Paul, we knew that this was going to be something that we would need help with. And Paul, are you here representing your firm? Are you, how are you here for us tonight to help us? How, how is the, is it Borowski, I mean, I mean, is it...
I'm here as town council from Latin member Borowski.
Okay, go ahead. I mean, it is for our town council, Lisa Mead and Ginny, and Paul are here tonight. So we don't take anything lightly, but we wanted you to know that some of the steps in the process, they have an enabling legislation that go with them that happens now to Newbury and to also many other towns to either side of this. Damon, do you want to say something?
Yeah, so with the peer review, if we have a peer review study of the water, of the traffic pattern, and the peer review says you need to do X, does that come down to the town to pay for, the applicant to pay for? If the applicant can't do X, does the project stop?
It depends on the nature of the insufficiency. For instance, if, if a peer review identifies an existing insufficiency that the town is responsible for, then it may be up to the town to actually make those improvements. For instance, I've seen instances where there are traffic safety issues that are raised regarding an existing intersection, where there are, you know, either alignment issues or obstruction issues, if there's bad sight distance. And in those instances, you know, it would be up to the town to correct those, because there's an existing safety hazard.
Taxes up. Taxes up.
There is an existing safety, if there's an existing safety hazard that is being identified, the Housing Appeals Committee has in multiple decisions indicated that it was up to the town to correct that insufficiency. On the other hand, if there is an existing adequacy and the project is going to create the insufficiency, then it's going to be up to the developer.
But none of it would put the brakes on the project?
It depends on the nature of the concern. If it's something that can't be remedied, or it can't be reasonably remedied, it could. You need to go through the process and identify what those issues are.
And it certainly could influence the density.
Absolutely could.
I mean, Martha or Paul, is everything from the, is that considered all cul-de-sac now? I mean, how, that seems an undue burden to have a cul-de-sac that long. Martha?
I, Martha can certainly give her...
But that's under our Bylaw.
Impression, under your subdivision rules and regulations. But that is certainly an issue of concern, and I think it's something that the town will include in its letter to the subsidizing agency. With regard to subdivision questions, one question I had is, is this a subdivision? Are these single-family homes, are they going to be condominiums? Standalone, I understand, detached units?
I guess the honest answer is, I think they're going to be, it's going to be one lot with condominiums...
Exclusive use areas?
Exclusive use areas. So each, each person would be responsible for their exclusive use area, but there would be some items that would fall under the condominium association. I think Jeff spoke to those, plowing the roads, the stormwater management areas and that sort of thing. But each home would be governed by the association, but it would be the responsibility of the homeowner to take care of.
It would be helpful to have those areas depicted on the plans when the permit application is filed.
And I heard somebody directly or indirectly, relative to taxes, this will be, the applicant is not asking the town to take this and plow to trash removal, do any of the stuff that is currently done on Pearson Drive? Alright, well, so it'll be, it'll be all privately handled.
Who, who, who does take care of it? Is it like a housing authority situation?
Not the associate, it'll be a private management company that's responsible for it. Yes.
Mike, come on up.
I'm down back. Anna. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Come on, go on.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. The board, my name is John Kriegel, K-R-I-E-G-L-E. I'm sorry, Nick. You'll get there. And neighbors. I live at 8 Pearson Drive. My wife actually owns the property, but she lets me live there. Been there for 38 years. You want, you want to think about it. There are two questions that come to mind, and I'm the attorney who was representing Ronnie Pearson when he put this whole subdivision together and bought the old farmhouse that Captain Abraham Adams built in 1701. So if you're issues with the zoning or whatever on Abraham Adams, you're out of luck. The issue that I'm concerned about, there are two things. Number one, we are very fortunate in that we have a shooting area, a target range, a shotgun area, a target range, that when you look at the topography of this, is located about there. And I wonder if these people are aware how close they're going to be to a target range, and if this is something that may have an impact on them. Number two, I'm curious whether you've looked at the remainder of the topography out here. As you continue down this area and continue out, there's probably another 15 acres out back. Is this phase one? Are we expecting more? Will there be more? Have they already taken options? Is this what we're looking forward to? Because we'd still be vulnerable under 40B. And the sad news is, folks, I'm a real estate conveyancing attorney. 40B, when they want to plow through, we're screwed. Yeah, I'm sorry. That's just the nature of the beast.
Well, how about Route 1? And they're going to try to go on Route 1, and that was shot down. Well, back to Route 1 again.
We can only hope, Liz, we can only hope.
Do me a favor, folks. It sounds like this is a community that speaks to each other. It's a neighborhood that speaks to each other. You know, which in these days and times is great. Do me a favor, probably pick a couple of people and channel, or all come. I mean, trust me, the numbers is great, but start to get your questions together for the planning board, the con con, the board of health. What else am I missing? One other one?
ZBA.
And the ZBA. Because you would want to, like was just said, if this has strong chances of going through, you certainly want to get as much conditioning in as possible to make it as palatable as possible.
My name is Chris Colombo, resident of 17 Pearson Drive. I am a police officer in another community, so public safety with this project is a concern of mine. With the density of the project, as my neighbor, just to reiterate what he said, not only the vehicle traffic, but the pedestrian traffic. We have people come off of, from Market Street, from Central Street, to walk on our street. They walk their dogs, they walk their children, which is great, but if you're going to have X amount of cars now coming down that street, and correctly from Long Island, it's a private road. So, being a private road, your Chapter 90 motor vehicle fences are enforceable on roads that the licensees have access by either invitees or licensees. If it's a private road, will they enforce traffic laws on this private road? Will public safety, like I said, be enforced on this road? That's a big concern that I have. That's one issue of, like I said, public safety. I know we'll save for another meeting. I'm sure we'll have those meetings on that. And if the board can answer... I heard rumors that this project was proposed because a smaller project was rejected by the board. I'm new to this area, so I would like to know if that is true as well.
Name please again.
Anne Carey, 40 Pearson Drive. When you talked about this 830 feet approximately from the end of the cul-de-sac to Pearson Drive, will it be reported to the state, the remainder of our road, for the emergency personnel to have to get from the top of Pearson? Because that's another like half a mile. Oh, 2,600 more feet. So, when you look at this... When you look at that drawing, that's deceiving because it doesn't report that.
Just to break things up and maybe a little clarity, does my board have any questions?
Yes. Go ahead.
How far is the wetlands crossing on the entrance?
How many, lineal feet?
Yeah.
I believe it's about 30.
That's it, huh?
Yeah, it's about 1,500 square feet, and it's kind of a triangular shape.
There's no other way to access this lot?
No.
Does... What does 55 Pearson Drive have to do with this development? Nothing?
They own the land. He's the owner.
There's an easement over 55 to get to this piece of land, and it's owned by the same developer.
Okay, that's all for now.
So, my first question is, this shared septic, what type of septic system are you planning to put in? The drawing you have has the tree line cut right at the edge of the septic. And as many residents of Pearson Drive have expressed, drainage there is not always great, especially not when trees infiltrate your septic system. Who's responsible for the maintenance of that thereafter? And what is the distribution for the water, given the location of wetlands and the proximity there? That's my first question.
So, the septic system, we've done soil testing out here. Pergrates range anywhere from 3 to 8 minutes per inch.
Yep.
It's a very flat, kind of sandy gravelly area down here. These boxes are based on a pipe and stone system. We may not use a pipe and stone, we may use a different type of system. We haven't determined that yet.
Okay.
We've just kind of sized the areas we needed, and that's as far as we've gone at this point.
And who... If this fails, the system, or when the system fails, I guess is a better statement, who pays for its replacement, upgrade?
Association.
Association.
A system like this, they would pay into a fund. They would probably fund...
Annually funding.
Annually.
Capital reserve.
The capital reserve, exactly.
Okay. And then, in this development, are all... You have three-bedroom and four-bedroom units. They're all the same, so one design would be made and then built repetitively? Or how does that...
Typically, in a development like this, and this will be consistent, you don't want to have 24 custom-built homes. You also don't want to have one home stamped out 24 times. In this instance, we have three or four different versions, if you will. They're all similar, ranging in 22... I think the biggest is 2,600 square feet in that range. Three-to-four bedroom, all two-car garages, but different to provide some variety. Typically, as part of the condition, the zoning board would require... I mean, if everybody came in and said, "I like the A unit", you don't want 24 A units. So typically, there's a requirement that you have to do a minimum of three units of each type or whatnot. So, that's kind of a detail that we hashed out. We're certainly sensitive that you want some variety, you want some interest. The applicant wants that because they want to create an attractive place that people want to live. So, we're not going to just one unit, one size fits all.
And are the units being prefabbed, or are they built on-site? And what sort of schedule would this be built on?
I don't want to speak exactly about my client, but typically, these are built as market demand dictates. I mean, you have to put in the road to a certain level, the infrastructure to support it. But any lender is not going to let you do, build 10 units if you haven't sold any. So typically, you have...
Speak up, please.
Yeah, sorry. So, the question was, I don't know if you heard the question, the construction schedule. Typically, a lot of... The road for something like this, the road and the majority of the infrastructure is installed, and then the units are built as market demand dictates. Typically, there's a couple model units, and then upon each purchase and sale agreement, additional units get built. It can be different depending on the lender, but as I was saying, a bank is not going to give a builder enough money to build out 10 units or 12 units or whatever it is before they've sold any. So, it's usually a progression as opposed to all 24 units are built at once. Clearly, it's in the best interest of the developer, the applicant, to build it out as quickly as possible.
That's it for right now.
One more quick one, I guess, for me. It might be Paul and Martha, but prior thoughts about this property had a lot to do with length of cul-de-sac and wetlands. And Martha, correct me, but, you know, with our wetland regulations, they defer, don't they, mostly to state regulations anyway?
Yeah.
In our town especially. So, I'm confused how, if we were running amok of some state regulations for the density of that development, and with a wetlands crossing and cut and fill and dredge, why there's not a MIPA study? I mean, how can the density go up so drastically when we were referring to some of... Martha, to some of the state wetland regulations before? When some of that... When they were talking about houses before in there? I mean... Paul, will that density trigger state regulations? Will there be a chance for that density to be reduced?
There's always a chance for reduction in density during the comprehensive permit hearing process. It's very, very common for that to happen. I don't think that they're anywhere close to triggering MIPA thresholds, but I haven't looked at that issue.
I mean, DEP doesn't give 40B a bye also.
No, it doesn't. But again, the Wetlands Protection Act deals with the amount of work that's occurring within wetlands areas in their 100-foot buffers. It doesn't really look to the density outside of those areas.
But how about the water impacts? It's not light impact development. Are you going to infiltrate all your water on-site of each house?
We haven't determined the exact details about regarding infiltration, but we will meet the Stormwater Management Act, which is part of the DEP wetlands process.
There is also a local stormwater bylaw. The board of appeals will have jurisdiction over that bylaw as part of the process. So, if they are not planning to meet the requirements of that bylaw, they're going to have to ask for waivers. And then the board of appeals will review it and determine whether or not granting such waivers is appropriate and whether it would render the project uneconomic. Chuck?
I had three questions. You answered two of them. Water and fire were a big one. The road going in, I have a very deep concern over that road. The condition of the road, it has not been paved in a long, long time. You had mentioned that there were sidewalks on yours, but there are no sidewalks going to your development? That is a major concern for me. And what are you willing to do to bring that road up to grade to handle that kind of traffic if this does go through?
Is that a... That's a question, or...
Yes, it is.
In general, I mean, some of those things we need to work through. But typically, on a project like this, if this... We would not be asked or expected on any level to provide a sidewalk on an existing road that's not part of our development. So, I mean, your point's taken relative to... We are proposing a sidewalk, and there's no sidewalk in the immediate area. I would also say this, and 99% of the people in the audience will not believe this, but it's based on many, 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 many public hearings over many, many projects. In terms of traffic, as far as how the state looks at it, 24 residential units is a very, very low-volume generator.
59.
Can I finish, please?
That's 48 hours.
Don't take my word for it. Town will hire traffic peer-review consultant. But relative to what the town... Relative to the regulations, the thresholds that we need to meet, I'm telling you, traffic in this situation, the level of service is not going to change. All of those things relative to what... And traffic engineering is based on math. So, our traffic consultant and the town's peer-review traffic consultant are not going to be doing a subjective analysis. They're going to be doing, using the same evaluation criteria, the same reference guide, all of the same methodologies. And we'll come to... And they'll issue an opinion relative to the issue. And we look forward to that process. But we're involved with 300-unit projects, 250, 200. Now, can heavily... I'm sorry.
Now, folks, listen.
I've been involved in hundreds of 40B projects. I'm just telling you based on my experience. You can choose not to believe me, and that's okay.
Now, Jeff has tried to speak. I mean, honestly, folks, the presentation starts the 30 days, which has ended 180 days. They really didn't have to answer a lot of questions tonight. So, they were gracious. So, let's keep our frustration levels down, and let's think about things going forward. It is going to be, and behoove everyone in the audience and all our boards, to be as sharp as we can, get as many questions as we can answered, and see where the process goes at the state level. But 40B is 40B. So, yes, ma'am? Can you come up?
Can you talk for us?
I'm sorry.
I'm Jason Frangus. I live at 41 Pearson Drive. And I just want to say what I'm hearing from you. This can be shoved down our throats, whether we like it or not, if it all goes through. Okay. But I just hope that everyone understands it'll definitely ruin my peace and quiet and what I so much enjoy about where I live. I feel so lucky to be able to live here. And I don't know how you can say that it won't change the way that it is because it will.
Thank you.
My name's Jason Frangus. I live at 45 Pearson Drive. So, I almost would die tonight. I know a lot of these questions are premature.
My question is, as you said, you guys... I know they step over you guys, step over the planning board, go, "Right, there's only one appeals." But you guys don't have a plan, but who is our liaison? So, you said, "Let's get a couple people together," or as... To come up with the questions. But procedurally, how do we get our questions, concerns on paper to you and make sure they get into the state?
Now, Martha, can you take that? A town planner, right? And Paul will help Martha. So, go ahead, Martha, speak. So, they... Come on up so they know how to... Give them the form that you would like the questions in so that you can work with them.
Well, I would say probably the best form to do it really would be emails. And you can send those to me at planningboard@townofnewbury.org. And it's on the website as well. So, any questions that come to me, we'll be coordinating to get the letter out to Mass Housing from the Board of Selectmen.
And that's great. And I'll tell you, Martha is very easy to talk to, works as hard as anyone we know, and will facilitate anything she can. Paul, Martha touched on something, and that's the letter that's supposedly occurring. Can you explain some of that?
So, the way the process works is, after the application has been submitted, or in this case, it's already been submitted, which is why we've gotten an extension. But the board typically have 30 days to provide written comments to the subsidizing agency, which is Mass Housing. Not necessarily in favor or objecting to particular development, although it could be either direction. But generally, the comments will identify issues of concern. Let the subsidizing agency know that these are what the town has received as concerns particularly from abutting property owners. And then Mass Housing takes those into account in their decision as to whether or not to issue the eligibility letter. Far more likely that it will be issued than not. What is most likely to occur is that they will incorporate those concerns into their letter and instruct the board of appeals to conduct additional review of those issues during its hearing.
Now, is our letter going to be prepared in the next 30 days?
Yes.
So, folks, please contact Martha.
And there will be a site walk through the subsidizing agency.
Let Paul discuss that with you folks, because I know you're going to want to be in the site walk. But the most, you know, like I said earlier, logical, readable, the best way you can put these together, because you're the folks that live there. We've got an overview. I mean, we can look down on it. We can drive down the street, but we don't live there. So, the best way you can put those forward to Martha and Paul, they will become part of that letter. What were you just going to say? Were you going to say one more thing to that? What did you just say?
They will be scheduling a site walk as well.
Do we know when that is?
No.
How will we find out about the dates, timeline?
Website, town, town wet... No.
So, once Mass Housing issues its project eligibility letter, the applicant will file a comprehensive permit application with the board of appeals.
Do they have a particular time to approve or not approve their application?
Does Mass Housing?
Yeah.
They don't have a particular time. They try to get a decision within three months. And my understanding is that they're a lot better with that than they used to be. They used to take, you know, six months, nine months. Once they get that eligibility letter, they file their application with the board of appeals. And the board of appeals then has to schedule a public hearing within 30 days. That's a duly noticed public hearing. So, anybody that is entitled to notice under Chapter 48, Section 11, which is a butters, and a butters to a butters within 300 feet, will get a written notice that the date and time of the hearing. At that point, after the initial hearing is held, the board of appeals will announce the next hearing at the end of each night. So, they finish, they're going to continue it to a date and time certain. And that's how you're going to know when each meeting will occur. And the same will be true for when they file for their order of conditions with the Conservation Commission. There's a public notice requirement with that.
And one thing to make you folks feel a little better, and I'll take one more question after this. Paul, this isn't your first rodeo, right?
No, no, I've done several dozen. 40, 50, 60 of these, representing applicants, representing boards of appeals, and representing a butters on occasion as well.
And he's trying to do the very best he can with what's in front of him. For the town.
Okay, not only will it...
Your legal counsel board of towns?
Correct. Correct.
Not only will the letters go out to the butters, it will be in the paper, and I will make dang sure it's on our website for you to all look up, okay?
I think it's going to be very difficult for you to not know when these are going to be.
One more question. Your name, please.
Linda. Last name's Antonio. Everybody knows who I am. I live at 18 Pearson Drive. And Mr. Jesperson knows the area well because he runs the... My first question is, well, I'm very... Obviously, we're all very concerned about this situation. And I understand people have a right to live wherever, and you try to provide that. Having said that, when you're on the receiving end of what we are going to be on, it isn't so warm and fuzzy. One question I have is, this particular parcel, from my understanding, abuts Martin Burns. Am I correct with that? That that strip of land that runs from Fomorke Street all the way back to Brian and Jody's and comes out to the dirt road, it's that long run. I was told light years ago by our historian, Dick Cunningham, "Don't worry, Linda, they will never be able to do a thing because it's all up..." will never be able to do a thing, because it's all uphill, a ton of water, and it's all wet, while here we are. My concern, many, many concerns, but one is, how much of the vegetation is going to disappear in between the people who live around on that side? Is there a buffer in between the existing neighborhood, the homes? And more importantly, nobody seems to be very concerned about the wildlife. And let me tell you, I have a real issue with that, and you cannot tell me there'll be no impact. There are many people on the backside of the street that have embrown pools. Good luck. They're all probably going to have cracks, and God only knows what else. Is this the only access to this proposed site on the existing road, or is there another in and out? These are all very valid concerns I have. You, you can't, the street may appear to be wide, but we all know it isn't, because if somebody's coming up and somebody's trying to go down, you've got to wait. Around the bend by John and Kathy Kriegel's, that's iffy at best, on a good day. And when it rains, well, that's a whole other story. And the glut of water, the drains there all need to be replaced. I'm talking us neighbors who are there, and there's a great ice floe in the winter, and the town has to come out, and they're chopping and digging. You have no idea. I mean, it sounds wonderful, but there were so many other issues, and it just seems to snowball, and it just makes me very upset to think that, like Tracy said, our way of life is going to be seriously compromised. And having said that, and no, I'm not earthy, crunchy, and crazy and out there, but this is where we live, and again, there's got to be, I don't know, hopefully, something will change, and I just, it breaks my heart to think that it's all going to be gone, and that's so unfair.
Let's do one more. One more. Brief. Procedural question, from taking notes, that might correct in saying that the Conservation, Bradford Spence, six Pearson Drive. The Conservation Committee, the Planning Board, the Board of Health, and the Board of Appeals, all are part of this process, and our questions and other follow-up meetings should all be when these four groups meet, correct?
The Planning Board will not have any jurisdiction over this project. They certainly can have participation. They can provide comments, they can appear at the Board of Appeals hearing individually and present their concerns from their position as planning board members, but there will not be any hearing process in front of the Planning Board.
Then I'm correct, and those other three committees?
The majority is going to be in front of the Board of Appeals, but portions of it, under the state permitting, will be under the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health.
And then that's, I think, the room is concerned about quick and efficient notification of when these meet and when we can show up again and have our concerns. I wasn't comfortable in the answer that we had in terms of how, I don't trust the paper. Like, we were, this, this good turnout is a result of word of mouth, not anything in the paper or, so, can we work something out in electronic? Because I happen to have...
The difference between that and this hear, this hearing is not a formally noticed public hearing, so nobody got anything in the mail that said there is going to be a public hearing on something tonight?
Why not?
Because, because that is not the process. This is not a formal public hearing. It's, it's simply an agenda item on a Board of Selectment meeting, and the applicant comes in, makes an informal presentation. Before anybody comes in front of any town board for an actual permitting process in which they will be getting any form of approvals, there will be proper public notice. So, certainly, the most direct abutters will be getting something in the mail, and word of mouth from there will spread a lot more quickly. There will, I also have heard a commitment that everything will be posted on the town website, so that's, you know, an easy place to look, to see. And once the initial hearings happen, the public will be very much aware, as the hearings go along.
I have something here that might help the notification process. I have ninety-nine signatures out of the sixty households on the street, all gathered in one day, with phone numbers and emails. Is there a proper person that, that should receive this?
Martha, you can give it to me right now, and I'll make sure.
That's good work, by the way.
It was quick and fast, didn't it?
Now, one thing I would like to at least try to convey, too, being our first forty-B, and even though that's low density, it's high density for the area, we wanted to enter into something as intelligently as we could, so this Board of Selectmen, your town administrator and your town planner have asked Paul to really help us, because we haven't gone through this before, and Paul is an expert at it. So, we are doing, and unless Paul knows of other things that other towns do, and he'll let us know that, we're doing the very best we can, as I E., your planner and all your other boards, this board is doing the best we can to do the best we can for you. That's all we can do.
We appreciate it.
And just to speak to the notification, if you go on the website, each of the boards, you can click on each board and click to get notifications from them. So, the Board of Health, so you get an email about their meetings, Planning Board, which isn't one you need, Zoning Board of Appeals, concom. So, if you go to the website, go to their specific board, click on it to receive notifications, you'll get a post about each meeting that they have and the agenda. So, that'll be emailed directly to you, so.
When can we anticipate the next meeting?
It's, won't be for several months, because the applicant first needs to get their eligibility letter from the subsidizing agency, they need to prepare their comprehensive permit application, they need to file it, then there's a thirty-day period, you know, before the hearing will commence. So, it's going to be a little while.
Jen, do I, do I have to entertain yours, too?
I'm afraid so. Can I just ask you, how long do people have to get their questions and concerns to the selectmen or to them they're sending it to, before the letter's written to them?
Less than thirty days.
Well, they're going to try to...
How quick?
July sixteenth is...
All right, Paul's going to answer that question. Go ahead.
So, the deadline for us to submit the comments to the subsidizing agency is July sixteenth, so we would like to have our letter prepared and ready to go by July twelfth, so that would be your deadline.
All right, one last question.
Earlier would be helpful, though.
Then we got to clear the room and kind of get on with our meeting. Go ahead.
There's a young lady in the back.
Yes, come on up.
So, my name is Samantha Hurwick. I moved in January to forty-six Pearson. I moved to forty-six Pearson because I loved that it was a dead-end, small-town America, the neighbors cared about each other, the neighborhood looked nice. We're not trying to be disrespectful to you, sir. But it's just, it's just been, it was almost shocking to my husband and I when we heard this was moving in, and we didn't have a say in it, and I just wanted to know, like, if this does get approved by the Mass Board, whatever it is, what is the benefit to us as citizens in this town? Are we getting a tax break? What's going to happen with our school systems and buses? And this may sound very trivial to you, but I think it's great that dogs run around our neighborhood, and they go and they play with each other, and I think it's great that kids ride their bikes in our neighborhood, and you don't have to worry about how to speed down the street to go to their house. Is there going to be a stop sign on that street? How is it going to be reinforced? And I'm on the corner of that, so I'm going to be the brunt of it. So, I'm very concerned about that, and I love that street, and I don't want it to change. But if it's going to change, I want to know that there's benefits for us that it's going to change.
Well, I have a couple of questions. Hi, I'm at three Pearson, County Road, and I don't know, you talked about deed restriction that, now, I'm wondering, somebody buys a condo, they can run it out to whoever they want, right? Is that right?
It'll be conditioned as part of the permit, what's allowed and what's not allowed.
What do you mean by that? Okay, could they run it out to whomever, correct?
That's a good question.
Someone with all kinds of issues, correct?
Put that in as one of your questions.
I will, don't worry about that. And then, another thing, I, I, I don't know about this, but you mentioned it, I think, two gentlemen did a good job here, about these peer review consultants. Is this cost, we have to pay this as a town?
No.
You pay for it, okay, good, because I have enough to pay for. My taxes, and I think that's, wouldn't be fair. And also, I don't see any handicapped units or elderly units in here, and these aren't handicapped accessible, I have handicapped, so none of these units, how does that comply to Mass Housing? Not one, they're all second, two-story. I can't walk up there if I'm handicapped. What if I'm, what if I'm a disabled veteran? How's, how am I going to even consider living here? Is that acceptable to Mass Housing? This plan doesn't seem like, it's got some flaws, is all I'm saying. Okay, so, it's, that's it for me.
Thank you very much, folks, for coming, obviously. And I'm going to clear you guys out of here, so we can continue.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for coming. Just got your legs for a minute.